Well, first of all, before I pray, I just want to express appreciation and say to you commissioners and to you, the honorable Judge, how much we appreciate you. You probably don't hear that enough, but you do a great job on our behalf. And so, thank you from the Citizenry of Amarillo, Potter County. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for every expression of your love and grace. We realize that all that we have in this great nation of ours, the breath of freedom we breathe, the joy that we have in family and friends, and being citizens of a great land and a great county, is really a gift from you, and we are thankful for that. In this great nation of ours, Lord, we know that the laws of the land and government of the people, by the people and for the people, is best expressed on a county level. And so, we pray today for these servant leaders of ours, that you would guide them in their deliberations, that you would be with them in their public and private life. Protect them, keep them safe from harm. And Father, bless us all that at the end of the day, we may spend our eternal destiny with you in heaven. We ask all of this through Jesus, who made it possible, and it's in his name. Amen.
Number one is approval of minutes from September 14th. Oh, I'm not going to approve any more. In October, speaking in October. Okay. Approval of minutes from September 14th, 2013, Potter County. Motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, reach right hand. Number two, vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment vouchers processed by the county attorney's office for the period September 9th, 2015 through September 23rd, 2015. Check numbers 164536, 3164752, and wire transfers, sorry, 2618, in the amount of $3,148,467.12. Motion for discussion.
Motion we approve, if I address this person's opinion.
Second.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, reach right hand. Dorothy, please come forward, please, ma'am. How are you today?
Doing great.
I want to come out there because I want to call everybody up right now. We got everything covered and done. This is Dorothy Wiggins, everybody. She has been counted 15 years. Mark, come on, come up and stay over. She's been here 15 years, she's retired.
There's no crying.
There's no crying. For sure. I just, I want to say something before I say something. I have to know you better than anything. And you were always professional, always sweet, always smiling, and then you got to come over here and I can make her so. Thank you for everything you've done, for what you've done, and all those great hits. And thank you for doing more.
Dorothy, you came to work here October 1st of 2000. When Dorothy came to work here, she brought three main things out of it. She was dedicated to what she does, she was a strong Christian lady, and she never gave up. Everything that this lady right here is doing, this is her building. We don't call it the maintenance department. She's in control of this building, you couldn't tell her any different. Dorothy, I appreciate all the hard work that you've done for Potter County, and I wish you the best of luck in your efforts.[300.12][300.12](Applause)
Okay, item number four, San Fe Autory. Consider and act upon reopening San Fe Autory to the public for a pardon center. The reason this is only due a little time is because legislative update, a couple of things were previously there was, they were talking about the new truancy laws that were coming up, and a particular judge got up and told a story about a young man who kept getting truancy, in trouble with truancy, that he wouldn't go to school. He finally showed up and nailed a pair of P B tennis shoes, and everybody at school lay in front of him, and that's why he wouldn't go to school, so the teachers were asking, why do you have on the P B tennis shoes? And he said, they're my sister's, they're hand me down, my mom cannot afford it, I need new shoes. So she took a lift, I've been, went and bought the boys some new shoes. This is why this is available now as a judicial donation trust firm, and we can use money from, some of the money that we get from renting an autory, to put in that fund to help kids like this. I think it's worthy, and that's not the only reason I want to own an autory, that's one of the reasons why I'd like to open that up. Mike, you and I have discussed this a little bit, we know that we need to make some changes to what we did before. One, my office is not going to be in charge of it because we're not in that building. So, after Lian takes a big sip of coffee, I'm going to tell her. They didn't want to do it while you were sipping your coffee, they wanted you to choke. We would like you maybe to take over the financial part of it, the rental agreement and the money, because it just seems right for someone to be in that building that handles the money. And you would also have a key to the autory to show it up, or show it off, whatever. And then Mike, you and I discussed that we've got to have more security. We've had some problems in the past with someone leaving the water on and flooding the building, so we need at least three, maybe four officers from the sheriff's office that will be paid. Is it $35 an hour? Sure. $35, so we need to redo, I guess Dave, redo the contract to reflect some of the changes we want to make. So, that's why I wanted to do this, and it's a public building, and I bet Shan and I get four or five vo calls a week as to why we don't rent it out.
I think folks have questioned that, I recall the concerns we had in previous years. And so, have we based a criteria on who's available to put in applications for audio? Is it individuals, associations, or accountability with the...
I don't think, oh, good.
I could recommend this. You have a policy for the courthouse where anybody that chooses to rent the, or I mean to rent the grounds or look at the building, utilize it, that they have to have a sponsor. The sponsor is one member of the commissioner's court. That person could obtain the documents from Lian's office, they could get one of y'all to be their sponsor in turn, that could be presented to court. I'd ask that you look at that policy, like I did on the courthouse, there's a lot of do's and don'ts that kind of would also go with that building, you know, as far as people renting, the type of people and stuff like that.
I'd like to ask a question, you know, about the building and when people want to rent it. Is there a way that we can stipulate that they be responsible for any damage?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those things need to be in the contract, and maybe take out even a little insurance on the thing. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, we've always had the insurance policy.
I'm talking about the individuals that rent the thing. It's their responsibility, what are their insurance?
That's part of the fee.
Okay. That's in there now, that'd be okay.
I think the damage fee was $250. The contract was to be revised in 2005, I kind of stopped using it in 2008, so what happened there. Another thing for you to please consider is currently right now, the auditorium up there, we've not done much work to it other than maintain the floors. We need to go through and utilize some of the funds that you have set aside for the auditorium to repair the flooring up there in the back area, so we've kind of put down hope throughout the years. We need to look at acquiring, sort of replacing some of the furniture up there. One of the biggest issues my department had that being rented out is when it's rented, is my personnel have to come in after hours in order to clean that up. It might be midnight or early in the morning, when you have alcohol up there, it just reeks throughout that area. So, we have, we have to bring people in to clean that up as soon as possible after these events, and to make sure that events are not back to back like on a Friday night, and then they Saturday afternoon.
So, and I assume that as commissioner, if you're going to provide some type of insurance policy, that would be some of the proactive business in that insurance policy, it was like you are leaving residents, you have a deposit for...
They did, before they did a deposit, they had to take out their own trash, they had to pay extra for alcohol, but to bring their own alcohol.
If we can get them to take out the trash.
Yeah, that would help.
Do we have the buckets available for one?
We provide trash cans, containers to put in, there was many times that we were ultimately responsible to carry the trash out, so that's why I'm saying, there's a lot of things that happened up there. Food vendors have brought food out, to people saying they cleaned it up, but they did not. Stuff being spilled on those nice wooden floors up there, that damaged them all. So, we really need to look at this policy.
So, the fund of repairs that you just indicated, is that something that we were ongoing, we only regular assesses towards the work to be done that was going to come out of the specific fund? Or is that something that we're now having to specifically label?
No, you have $10,000 set aside for auditorium, I think, repairs or anything we need to do in the auditorium. We've just not really used that through the years because they have been rented out since 2008.
Would you maybe check it out, see what we need, and how much it's going to cost? Put that on our next meeting?
If you, okay, if you go ahead and approve it, please take into consideration, we already have events that are scheduled up there no matter what, that's ongoing each year, from the sheriff's department's sales to other functions.
So, leave it. Do a visit. One second. No, I was just saying, I hope we, we would have a policy that states that the county activities have first choice.
Absolutely. And county, C S C D, they use it every year for the Christmas party, and there's no charge, there's no charge for county employees to use it, unless it, unless it is not related to work.
Party parties?
Yeah.
We have those Christmas parties, the Emerald Area Task Force utilizes it, the fire department utilizes it for their annual banquets, sheriff's department, citizens academy banquet. There are just many things that we currently have already slated.
The primary concern, the people that call our office, is to use it for weddings. They want a wedding reception in that room, and that's, it's pricey. It's about $12, $49, but they say, okay, pay it.
We based that cost also to the city back in 2000. I would have visited with them on an area that size for what it would take to rent it out, the labor, providing employees to be there, so that utility that we're all in consideration. So, that's something we need to look at to make sure that those people are...
I would say we need to go with the county attorney and come up with a really good plan, and Lian, and Charles, thank you. We all, be sure that we all met and knew exactly what was expected, and so we all on the same page. Okay, Dave, with that said, do you see a problem with this fund?
I, looking at it, I don't now. They're raising some questions at the end about, just on the, I don't have any clues what they're talking about. So, I don't know, I'll look into that.
Okay. Okay, let's, we won't vote today, then. We'll vote next time, is that all right? We'll vote, we just...
Next time, you're only going to have three.
Oh, next time, you're going to, he's going to be going next time sometime. Good luck. So, we...
So, either do it today or wait till following that, since the judge is sitting.
Why don't we go ahead and vote today?
We're going to pass it and then work out all the details, because we're going to go ahead and rent it. I think that's probably the general consensus, that we'd go ahead and allow it to be rented. I would make the motion that we just start renting the auditorium, San Fe building.
How about we add in there to, with the addition, additional security and whatnot?
Additional criteria, just we spoke about.
Okay. Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
If we want to start renting it before we have some, not some contract built.
Oh, no, no, no. No, we're going to get the contract out. Is there, is there anything you want to add, though?
Yeah.
Carrie?
No, Carrie, there's just a lot of research that...
And even, and the bottom line is, even if we can't do this, we still open it back up. I mean, we don't have to go, but I would certainly like to use a portion of the money to go towards this transfer court. Okay? Okay, I'll, yeah, motion in a second, all in favor, reach right hand. Thank you. Number five, tax office, to consider and act upon the tax refund for overpayment of taxes. Sure. Apparently, this person had to pay taxes in about seven years. This was a case where there was a deferral on the property, and when it sold, the town company paid as if the deferral wasn't in place, so they way overpaid it, anyway. So, we owed them $11,000. Okay. Right.
So, I'd move that we approve the tax refund for overpayment of taxes in the amount of $11,262.39.
Motion second, all in favor, reach right hand. Thank you, thank you. Insurance report, case or anything?
No, nothing, nothing.
Aren't so recognized. Number seven, monthly treasury report, do you recognize that? Okay, okay. Which one? Lian, Lian. I was just going to give you totals for this morning, and let you know also that tax pool is up to nine basis points in tax pool prime is 16, so we've certainly been climbing and holding, so that's good news. In our checking, Emerald National Bank account, we have $6,285,343.73. In tax pool, $398,499.37. Tax pool prime, I still have $231,070.59. And then in our cedars, we still have the three month cedars of $3 million, and the one year cedars at $7 million. The $3 million will mature October 29th, so we'll make some choices of what we're going to do at that point. So, as of today, our cash total is $18,714,910.69. That's you up to date. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, recognized. Number eight, Government Finance Officers Association to recognize and certificate of achievement award to Carrie Hoden, Potter County Attorney's Office. This person presents the highest form of recognition in government and county, and financial reporting with physical year in certain areas. Just want to tell you one more time, Carrie, thank you so much for the job you do, you and your staff. Now, I love what it says down here, "In the spirit of full disclosure," I love that, so thank you for, this is, what, how many years in a row now?
21 in a row.
21 in a row.[1205.83][1205.83](Applause)
I'd like to say, there are a lot of your departments who helped with this, so it's a county-wide thing.
Yeah, but still, you're, but you're the one who's accountable, and we appreciate your diligence in what you do, so thank you very much. That's awesome. Okay. Number nine, official bond, to consider and act upon approving or recognizing the official bond of county constable, we see two. Okay. Amy, sir. Come on. So, this is the bond for Georgia Strada. Yes, it's just, y'all just need to approve it, yeah. Okay. She's done it and signed it. She's done it, she signed it, I favor her, I would, even though I did it as the, it's JP. Had to turn around, do it again. Right away. So, we're good with this, so we just need to vote on this. Okay, need a motion?
I make a motion to approve official bond for our newly constable, we see two.
Motion in a second, all in favor, reach right hand.
How much is the bond?
$15,000. $15,000. Do you know, oh, yeah.
Wasn't many, but $15,000.
Okay, number 10. County video program, to consider and act upon, had a written contract with G C I, C G I Communications Team to produce and host web-based videos. This is a lady that Commissioner Vaughn told me to go see at the legislative update. I may go see her, and she had a really good deal, so she called me and, Jason, and we went over with her, and Wendy gives a really cool idea, so Jason, you be technical now, go for it.
No, 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 I promise I won't be a technical, it's too early. Long and short of it is, this company is based out of Upstate New Orleans, say Syracuse, Rochester, somewhere up there. They, their business model is set up to where they will send out a videographer, someone professional, camera operator, they'll write a script, all this, to produce a series of videos for Potter County. A welcome video, you know, welcome, you know, to Potter County, you know, things about us, talk about the healthcare, talk about education, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. And their business model is set up to where they don't charge the counties for this. What they do is they sell advertising on their own website for this, so they contact local businesses, AMV, whatever, they contact local businesses, sell advertising, and that's how they make the money. And so, even though there's no cost to the county, because it's a contract, we need to bring to the cost.
Is this something we, we get to approve or not approve?
Yes, yes, yeah, there's a, there's a, I think it's two or three revisions we can make to it. We help them, you know, write the script, and kind of, you know, help them build what we want to emphasize. And we can also update the video as we go through, like, you know, if we've got construction projects, if we have those, to kind of let people know, here's, here's where we're at this week, or here's where we're at this month. It's a good way to enhance and promote the county, show qualifications and all of the we do, and use the marketing tool that's out there, that we don't have to need it for, as a signature of the county.
Yeah. So, I need to sign the contract, so we're asking for your permission to sign it.
New York. New York. New York. New York. New York.
Okay, you may want to make a motion.
I move that we approve the contract with C G I, for the cases to produce and host web-based videos.
Okay. Have a motion in a second, all in favor, reach right hand. Okay, number 11, Potter County, Potter Randall County President, to consider and act upon submitting a nomination for board member. I'm calling them. Okay. It's your period, I asked two people, neither one of them could do it. I hope y'all have some idea of mine.
I asked, I did not, so I absolutely did it already.
I asked two people, they don't know, could. Do you have a question? Would you?
Tough to get people along, too.
They need somebody by tomorrow.
Anybody have any suggestions up there?
Too good, Rich.
May I address the commission on this? Good morning. Good afternoon. Joy, I see you all again. I'd like to suggest that you do something, maybe it's a little bit revolutionary. I don't know that it's ever been done. You publicize, and it may not be appropriate for this particular appointment, but if you were to advertise publicly and invite responses from the public, from people who are interested in serving on this board, you might find you'd have some wonderful candidates who are self-selected, a lot of people that you might know in advance, but if you ask for a resume, some, some evidence that they have the ability to serve and commitment to serve, I think it would serve citizens well, and it would reflect wonderful credibility on this organization for inviting public response. How do you make your move?
I agree, except that it runs under a really strict timeline.
Oh, I see. This time may not be appropriate, and I would volunteer, I don't know if you'd want me, but normally, I would be available to accept an appointment to a body like this, but I'm not in a position to do that at this time without any prior notice, so I apologize for that. But I trust that in the future, when you have vacancies, if you publicize them, you might be amazed and struck with wonder by the amount of responses you have.
Struck with wonder, I think. Dave, are we allowed to do that, to publicize it, to...
Sure.
The time, the space that we offer, this is...
Yeah, yeah, they need, and needed someone last week, actually, we gave them a week to do it, so...
So, without having anyone who can present, we notify, where are we at, this year?
I do not know.
Yeah, we'll tell them.
Carrie, do you have any idea what they do when we don't give them another name?
I don't. I just know our next meeting is in December. We need to have it.
Well, I'm wondering if there might be a vacancy that you could fill later. I understand the time deadline, but I'm looking to see.
Well, if we can't do that in the meantime, we do need to vote on the ones that haven't agreed to serve. One day I'll look that up, so Zach Plummer, Gilbert Guzman, Junior Sidney Spannels, and now, and Kate Ledbetter and Jerry Aver, we can go ahead and vote on those, and then just tell them that we have a vacancy.
How often, sure, how often does it, what do you mean?
Four times, maybe, four times a year, every quarter.
And I'm going to go out on a limb, to one of my constituents, and I'm going to suggest that I represent the nomination of Billy Miller to serve in the county.
Okay.
As you tell him.
Billy Miller, where she live?
She lives, um, I don't want to speak.
Okay. We will, with a motion, if you'll make that motion.
I present the motion, name, Billy Miller, to serve as a member of the Potter Randall County District.
So, you take, and then you say which place, for two-year term. You have a motion for a second?
I'll say it.
Okay.
I was going to approve all of them, or did?
Let's go ahead and approve all of them at the same time, okay, with the call, et cetera, okay. All right, so a motion, in the second, I'll, like, a second. Who's second? He's second, he made a motion, too, on the favor, Rachel, right here.
I'll just hear it.
Thank you very much.
I just know about that work.
Yeah, we can like, uh, first today and then we know. Okay, okay, in the meantime, the resolution is ready, but we will add, I've said, we then will add a little more to the resolution, I'll sign the resolution with your approval, right? Okay, then twelve, we're gonna pass that one this time, Danny Brown. Did you have anything on that, in the back? Okay, we'll pass that for them in a few weeks. Number thirteen is interpreter fee to consider an act upon setting a payment schedule for the services of interpreters to authorize daily amount in excess of one hundred dollars required by the county. Thirty-eight point three oh code, criminal procedure. I got this letter from, um, Gary Jackson. He sent a simplest letter to, uh, Saywa, LaHone, LaHone? Uh, she said, is that a female? Okay, uh, anyway, she, he, she is asking for an additional rate, which goes over the amount that this, that the law allows. She wants fifty-five dollars an hour, which would take a hundred and ten dollars a day. And here's, here's what, that's what they do, they, in a court of interpreter, in a court hearing, and they may be here five minutes, they may be here two hours, they charge the same. So, if they're five minutes, they charge thirty dollars, or a hundred dollars for the whole, for the whole day, right, Carrie?
Yeah, even if you have one firm that charges a minimum of three hours, ninety dollars an hour, so regardless, whether you're three hours or five minutes, we pay to set a fee, which is, uh, statute.
How can they do, how, Danny, how can they do this if this, this sounds, if it's illegal?
They can charge wherever they want, the question is, what do we authorize to pay them? So, I mean, without, I mean, really, without the courts of commissions of court, we really don't have the authority to pay them over a hundred dollars, I think we can figure it out, so. But, I mean, we've done it because we need interpreters, so, so I guess what we need from the commissions court is authority to, it says set a payment schedule, and, I, I mean, I think at this point, we probably, I would suggest setting a schedule.
So, do you have any comments about, uh, your, your district attorney?
Yeah, what, would this, if you're, you're, if we allow, if you just, if you deserve enough money, would they?
Here, here's the deal, the interpreters, whether they're interpreting in courtroom, whether they're translating a document, they're expensive. Very, they're charging minimalists, the payment are ridiculous. But the bottom line is, that's what they're charging. On the other hand, we only pay a certain amount supposedly. You know, the statute provides at least a payment court may come, whatever the statute, how good a job they're gonna do of interpreting it at that point, but of course, I don't think they can risk losing their credibility. But, uh, I think if you wind up just paying a hundred dollars a day, probably gonna have to subpoena them and make them come. And they're not gonna be very friendly interpreters, if that makes sense.
That doesn't make sense, I hired two lawyers to do my show calls, hearings, and whatnot, and they take what I give them with the county pays, you know, so.
Oh, I'm not?
And they do a good job, too.
Do Jackson be brought forward?
So, I mean, how do, how do we, how do we seal it on that, Doug?
There's still a new cost in that.
Well, card force and reversal, the statute says that the judge of that court will set the pay between fifteen, at least fifteen and a hundred dollars per day. And then the statute says, if the pay wants to go over that, then the county commissioners court has to approve that, above the hundred dollars a day. The issues are, and where they're making their money on it is, they may come to the docket, but they have three people they're gonna interpret for, that they may only be there two hours for, for the three people, yet they're gonna charge you for six hours and, and look in.
Are individuals gonna charge it?
Yeah, they're charging per.
They, they charge per individual, not per town. Now, if they come to a court, like district court, and that trial's going three days long, all day, eight or ten hours a day, then they're gonna charge per hour. But it's up to that judge or the commissioners court to approve something above a hundred dollars a day. So, if they're going to ask for an increase, they need to go to the legislature and ask for an increase, or they need to come to you and justify you while this is, and, I mean, anybody comes to justify that, I don't know.
Is there anybody in the house who wants to talk about this, anybody?
It's ridiculous. Three, you get some, two hours, you serve two people, three people, and you gotta charge.
They're gonna charge a minimum of two hours per person, even though they may only be there two hours.
Where did that come from?
That's their rate, that's, I mean.
A lot of things should be changed immediately.
This is, this is the annual interpreting and translation service.
And they're just one group.
That's just one.
That's because of that, there's the deaf translation, and there, theirs is the same rates by statute, but it's under a separate statute.
And we have here the, uh,
And everything will be, uh, uh, which we could be setting the rest of the, do this, and we got a lot of other services out there.
I think we need to change something here, this, this is, uh, this should be charged by time, not by individual.
Well, I think you can do that, with a payment, with a payment schedule, I mean, that, that would be the purpose, I think, of having a, I mean, and I, I mean, that's the one rate for interpreters, that's fine. Nothing says, I mean, if they, if they're here for three people and they're waiting, we're not gonna charge them three times an hour for doing that, and that's ridiculous. Uh, I mean, well, I mean, I would, you know, you can, you can say you're gonna pay for a reason, wait time while they're doing their services, which you're not gonna exceed, you're just gonna pay them for that hour and not, not per person in the interpretation.
Well, I think that needs to be.
Yeah, if they show up, they, they know they're showing up with three clients, and they're gonna be there two hours, they should be paid two hours, not two hours per client.
Per client, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's not, I think that's.
That's, you know, that's, that's kind of gauzy.
Yeah.
I can tell, tell you with some of the languages, dialects that we have now, some of them have, or the one, set with the same language. There was one murder case that, uh, the only two court clerk interpreters we could find was one in Houston, one in New York City. Uh, you can do phone, that probably phones, for a murder case that necessarily works out, but hopefully, and stuff is what you're finding. Some of these, some of the individuals that we find in our county is very difficult, even if I'm somebody that's capable of this, so.
Just out of curiosity, what was the language that they needed to come from New York to?
When you get to some of the, the middle of the, Middle Eastern countries.
So, wasn't somebody from New York, wasn't anybody from, uh, I'm making a joke here.
Yes.
Right. I don't know, that text is drawing, I'll read that.
So, doesn't the, uh, what is it, the, the two-one-one agency, they provide some type of services, uh, to that, to me, that, uh, that particularly needs? Is that, uh, cat, uh, service?
No, that's, yeah, charities, cats and charities, that's one, but not two-one-one is.
Two-one-ones, that's just, uh, I don't know, Derek, that's. They get services.
It's a phone?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, there's, there are phone stuff, but I can find actually certificified, uh, individuals to translate Spanish. They're a side, company in Lubbock, and a company that's working part-time here, and the other company over in Mexico. And to be quote-unquote, quote, certified, they've pulled resources in, three or four members of that group, see what I'm saying? So, they wind up charging all the same thing. Are other counties throughout the state having similar issues, or have we, uh, uh, floated out to see that what may be occurring in some other counties, some of the sides, what is that? We called Lubbock to find out what they were doing, and we sang over it. And as far as the outlying counties, they don't have the, uh, diversity of races that Potter County has, you know?
Can they actually do it?
They lead the way in that statute.
They do it by video at all, is there any other could do it by video?
Why, it's great, definitely. Well, what needs to happen if you're doing a jury trial, and it's, it's defendant, somebody's gotta be right there, 'cause everything that gets said in the courtroom has got to be said to the defendant. And then, you got a witness that you need, that one can't do it, you gotta have somebody else do the witness, so. So, so, what are your thoughts? You know, when I say stick on a hundred bucks and that, a hundred dollars an hour is good money in animal taxes.
Well, I, I say that and say that if they have one interpreter showing up for three clients, for two clients, that they do not get to charge two hours per client, when the whole total didn't take two hours to start. Because if, if we know they're coming, you can, you can change your docket, we can pull them up first. And so they're not having to sit in the audience for an hour and a half waiting to get there.
So, this is what you said, though, is this could open up the county line with other, on, with the deaf interpreters and whatever else. Do we need to make it a county policy right now to make it a hundred dollars a day?
Why, this is the language in interpretation, there's, there's actually a different statute.
Oh, there is, okay.
And I, I think we need some.
That specificity and all of that, uh, things that we have the most agency, it is, so it would.
At one point, have a degree, uh, that agency just provide.
Yeah, they need to change, though, it's no longer a county council.
Yeah.
So, I was to get over it, so.
And I don't know what we do if we had that situation.
I think we have to have something dividing, and, uh, to, uh, cover between this county, uh, whatever the rest.
Do I understand it's not for hours, it's a hundred dollars per day?
For now, the, the law says per day.
Right.
They charge.
Fifty.
They won't go down to fifty-five dollars per hour, and they have a minimum of two hours.
So, they're already?
And they're already getting a hundred, but, 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 right now, they're at forty-five and higher. And, uh, so if it goes over two hours, then they're gonna start tacking on more than fifty-five off. And if, if the judge, if their bill says they're not paying this, they're paying you a hundred dollars, I mean, I'm sure they have any recourse, but to say, next time, we're not counting, so.
Yeah, I doubt that.
I don't, I don't think that'll happen because if no force of bringing them in, then they can't exist as a bill, so.
It sounds to me like they're writing the policies, we're having to pay, pay the bill, and I think it needs to be reversed.
We should be writing the policy into the day.
I can tell you, we have, we have had some interpreters up in the courtroom in the past, and they probably did pay, I think they got the expenses and stuff, too, if they've come out of town. I can't, I can't remember, I don't, I don't think we wound up paying them, we were kind of agreeing beforehand, I want to pay them, they, they is a big set, we don't really pay them, but, I'm sure it's probably worth a hundred dollars. I guess in this, but then, well, it is.
I think we need to be the, I think we need to try and set it, and set it right. Scott, what are your, what's on, setting up right on?
Well, I mean, I totally think of more of a question, contract negotiation, what part of there, what, what availability of the resource is, and, you know, I mean, we can probably find somebody to translate Spanish for us, when we have to find somebody to translate Burmese, or a dialect of Burmese, it becomes increasingly difficult to do so, and so, you know, we, we, from our end, we find ourselves, we kind of be in a position, I guess, well, hey, well, we have to pay, we gotta get, we gotta have a translator in order to go forward with a trial or even plea.
Let me ask, let me ask this, and, uh, taking off Mr. Dootch's, uh, first addition about transparency, about notification, and, and, uh, putting out information to the general public, uh, of those type of individuals that could serve, regardless of whether they are working for a translation service or not, would that be something that we might want to look at?
It gotta be certified, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Who cert, who does the certification? Who certified?
Uh, good question, uh, they go through some kind of training and?
I think the I S D has a certification process, too, if they have.
I think they work through OCA, but I think there's a separate board that works for OCA, the, the office court administration. But, yeah, I've never actually looked into it much, you know, I can look it up later.
I was, can I, uh, get a certification on, um, it's, you know, like, on, on, on the internet, say, I'm certified.
I don't know, I don't know what they require in service.
For people from Boston.
New York, I guess, Boston, you can translate Massachusetts.
You're in Sox, Sox.
A track, right, Sox, Yankees.
So, you're kind of law enforcement, a lot of times, using some people in their offices, you know, their departments, that sort of thing. Sometimes we, it's like, you know, I've got a separate French speaking, that's why I'm in my office. So, for the day-to-day stuff, most of the, we can kind of get by.
Yeah, it's court.
Most of the time.
It's court, the cost is.
Burmese is one of those, it's got like twenty different dialects, and there's a lot of organization countries that have that, and so, those are kind of difficult ones to do. I would equate this to the same thing, you stat my court appointments, they all used to be done about an hour, instead of, you're gonna get this much, this much, you know, it's a plea or a trial or what. And so they fill it all out, the judge's gonna know, I'm paying that, I'm paying that, I'm paying you a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, I'm paying you a hundred dollars an hour. And I think that's what this statute wants to do is, y'all can decide what gets paid.
But I'm certain, returning to your question, Commissioner, I, I don't see any problem with at least trying to pool just who the available resources are. I mean, really, this is, there's, as far as the statute goes, the statute caps how much you can pay, but it doesn't say anything about what you can do to try to negotiate terms or anything like that, so.
Carrie, you said something about two hundred and seventy-five dollars, somebody gets paid that budget.
Yes, we have one master Spanish interpreter, and it charges ninety dollars an hour in a minimum of three hours, so we paid two seventy for master Spanish interpretation.
So, when we said this is a, there's a policy.
You may send a master in Spanish.
Certification, I assume, I probably don't know, if they're of course certified, at least that's what we said.
And here's my thought about for, for us, the county level, if we don't have a court certified interpreter, but it's fine with the defense board, or it's fine with us, and it's fine with the judge, as far as doing the pleas and stuff, I, I mean, that's, that's the way we, we do it. Only time we're gonna try to, definitely have to have a certified person, maybe go for a statement, it's like, you know, major crime homicide, or something's probably gonna get tried. Or even same thing for something that's gonna wind up being in the courtroom. Other than that, we're gonna get by with something other than that.
Yeah, I agree with Randall, it's, it's gonna be jury trial instead of the real issue.
So, that's.
We can try to piece stuff together for pleas, although in Burmese and some of those, or idiosyncratic, uh, languages are a little more difficult and, um, expensive, but, for Spanish, we usually run somebody in our office, unless we're going to jury trial.
Sometimes law enforcement use a family member or a friend of the person to translate.
Yeah.
So.
Just, just to, just to tell you a story about that, one time we had an interpreter do that on a, on a criminal case, and the interpreter. And the interpreter got the wrong, the guy was in jail thirty days and they said thirty years. And I thought the guy was gonna have a heart attack. But it's what can happen, they can make mistakes. Yeah.
And that's part, obviously, that's part of the certification process is intended to do is to minimize those mistakes and maximize some assurance of proficiency.
I say that we go for what this statute says, a hundred dollars a day, not wasting fifteen dollars, not more than a hundred dollars.
But that statute's in effect. Remember, the part of that statute says, if we want to increase it, then Michigan's court is the only one that can increase it.
Okay, so that's already in effect?
That's already a hundred dollars.
It's already a hundred dollars? So nothing to make taking here?
Other than, uh, this, this deal...
I have them a hundred and ten or whatever. That's one, that's one station. Then we're gonna, they need to know that and then we need to start striking. So they also, y'all need to, I think, need to, is making it clear then that we're not gonna charge you per person and pay you for six or eight hours when you're there an hour and a half before a client. That we're gonna base it on time, not on people. That's my...
So do we need to make, do we need to vote on this at all since it's already in the statute?
I, I'm gonna present a contrary view, I think you ought to go ahead and raise them up. I, I don't know, one thing I don't know about this statute is what is in effect. It may be just out of date as far as the amount of money. I mean, that may not be, a hundred dollars may not be a realistic fee to an interpreter for translation. And I don't see harm in raising it to a hundred and ten.
The ceiling is a hundred and ten, that's what it's saying.
Well, I would say, I would say you may proceed as a hundred and ten and include the, that that's for actual translation and you'll consider waiting time as an expense that you're allowed to reimburse for. But you're not gonna reimburse, you're reimbursing for the actual expenses of waiting for time regardless of the number of persons served. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So I, I think that's a good change to make, but I don't see harm in raising that to ten, uh, right, you know, right now. And I think that's part of it.
So we don't know how long this has been standing like?
No, I mean, I can look it up for you, but I suspect it's...
The last time this was, the statute was changed, I think, was in two thousand and eight. But it didn't change the rate, so I don't know how the rate is.
Rate's probably been, been in place since the nineties.
From ours?
This was last amended in...
Okay.
Looks like this was last amended in two thousand and fourteen. And I don't know if that included the, uh, the rate or not, this agreement is again, well, exactly. So it's been, and before that it was two thousand and five, so it's highly likely that, I think that, I don't think it's been there for a while.
So we need some clearer language in this, just to, I don't think we have a ceiling, but to go for the, uh, five hours, that doesn't hesitate that we're going to spend that amount more than the, I guess the two hours.
I would say that you set your ceiling at the payment schedule not to exceed a hundred and ten dollars a day with, uh, waiting time paid on the basis of actual time spent and not the number of persons involved. Whatever Scott, how does Scott put it? I think if that's in your motion, I think that's an amendment that give the audit or submission authority to do that.
So even if the district judge orders you to pay two seventy, this action here will supersede that?
That's what, that's what the statute says. And if it says, Michigan's court has to approve. Now, if that's not realistic, we'll have to talk again, but, uh, you know, and, and you may, you may be right, I mean, Randall, you may be right, I mean, that may be just the cost of doing, that may be just the price to have it on the first side. On the other hand, Carrie just looked at the numbers and you're, today you spend about seventeen thousand dollars a year this fiscal year on interpretation. Most of that is for Spanish interpretation. So your, so the exposure for more exotic languages is probably not, not worth worrying about, is what I'm trying to say. Yeah, it's minimal. Yeah, it is minimal. So, so if you can keep, I do think these things Randall and Scott are suggesting, you can probably keep the Spanish, uh, amount fairly low. There are many times when you need, you know, other languages.
Well, and I think the statute even says, which is other than Spanish. Because Spanish is more prevalent throughout regional translation.
So then I, I can't, let's see. Again, I guess my question is that, since we're sort of, uh, I don't think we're looking at, we need to make, uh, go and track down the statutes and something with their, their stating and give the interpretation out with the code for discount? Before we make a decision?
I don't know, I think, I think the hard, I'm understanding your point. I mean, the hard, the hard languages you have to really hunt around for something. I mean, luckily it hasn't happened very long, often, but there's, there's a lot of them. I mean, I, you would be astonished how many different languages are spoken in this town. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's mind-boggling. And so some of those are gonna be, thank God, most of those citizens are all right. And so you can tell, otherwise your interpreter fees would be much higher than they are. But every once in a while you do have to, you have some. And, and it might not be for just a criminal interpretation either. I mean, you might need to interpret for someone who's involved, who is a victim, or who's involved in a, in a family law matter, or some, you know, who, or some kind of a civil case or something like that. So it's not necessarily, you know, I know the statute speaks to criminal cases, but that's not our only need. That's not where our main skill, interpretation, that's the speed.
Let's get this up and set center and I'll make a move. I move that, uh, we increase the daily rate for interpreter services to a hundred and ten dollars. And that, uh, this rate be based on the power they're at, rate rather than the number of people or clients.
That's efficient.
That's good, yeah.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four, zero. Thank you. Number fourteen, annual license renewal sexually ordering business to correctly announce the license renewal for a first date in pursuant to and as required by the section of the business regulations. That is something we do every year, unfortunately, we've done it for several years.
I know, what commission we're giving right here.
What about you?
She won't have to mess with this.
I can actually think of this. Sort of again.
Your motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'm gonna three to one.
Okay, yeah. Okay, you have your original for me, it's not a... All right, number fifteen, surplus properties, consider an act of selling law books from the law library to record appeals prior to transferring them to auction. I've talked with Judge Purtle, he has specified certain books that he would like to have before we transfer them all. Um, and, and because of the law, we have, since he's not a county boy, we have to charge him a dollar.
Well, you can, you can set a rate, that's, that's what...
I set it at a dollar. Uh, we can go less, it's up to the commission or if they want to, or we can go more. So, um, but he's willing to pay for those. And I think it's fifty-nine dollars total, these fifty-nine books.
And in all honesty, we don't sell those at auction, and so they'll have to be disposed of. We, we'll have to try to sell them, that's how the law's written, even though we know they won't sell. So we can get a little money and not have to transport those fifty-nine books out to auction.
How many books are available for sale?
And we don't have a count.
I have quite several hundred next to it.
Does anybody have a lawyer attorney, or anybody want to?
Everyone uses those.
Yeah, very few.
Very few. One attorney wants to buy a section of them. And, um, 'cause he likes to have it in his hand. And I can't remember what it was called, you said the brown books. I sent it down, okay, cool. I'll get there and send it down.
A lot of the brown books.
But I can give it to him, but he can't, he's not allowed to.
He can bid on it.
He can bid on it, I'm sorry.
Don't limit on me to fifteen, but...
But then we're gonna let the county attorney and district attorney go through it too before we take the function. So we'll, we'll try to get this first throughout the county.
Okay. We need a, we need a motion, yes?
Can the, uh, attorneys in those offices purchase the books? Be legal?
Your attorneys.
Oh, our lawyers?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, well, they probably could, but none of my lawyers can, you know, they, Dave and I are the old lawyers who still use those book things. Uh, none of our young lawyers even, probably even know what a law book is. Everything is electronic, you know.
Thank God that this video is not your problem.
Yeah, I know.
I move that we allow the sale of the law books from the law library to court of appeals. It's fifty-nine, nothing but a dollar a piece. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four, zero. Five, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, so that's one, okay.
Just to make the court aware, on the fire protection project of Judge Tanner, I spoke at his office last week. Uh, bids are due tomorrow, uh, Thursday. We'll be reviewing that, we may have to bring that to court on October the twelfth. Do ask. Uh, David, we do not bring it to court until the twenty-sixth, midnight meeting. Just making all aware of the couple.
Okay, okay. And number seventeen, employment hours. Out of my office were the transfer of Michelle Jordan from Potters County Law Library to Rikers Management effective October one, and transfer of Rhonda Johnson from Inage to Potters County Attorney's Office effective October one. So this will, we'll do the vote all together or depending on...
All together.
All together. Okay, and then the facilities maintenance, retirement of Dorothy Fuentes at fifteen years of service, effective September thirty. Transfer of Matthew Johnson as custodial foreman as a replacement for Dorothy Fuentes effective October one. And the hiring of Lawrence Baca as custodian two as replacement for Matthew Johnson effective October one.
Jody?
Yes.
Transfer.
Okay.
Lawrence Artur.
Okay, transfer, so. Road bridge, the resignation of Leslie Lingle at the seasonal law, effective September thirty. So do I have a motion to approve all of these?
I move that you approve all of those with the necessary expression of, uh, the ready to transfer. Second.
Your motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four, zero. Ms. Yonah, she's got to go, eighty-one, an adult, eighty-five, older female, and they have seven cows and shores. Is that correct?
That's correct. Ms. Yonah, she asked for a little more to get the outside, invited her over to see what exactly she wanted. So what I came up with, now, these numbers are as of Friday, 'cause I do have them over here this morning, but as of Friday, I mean, we had a total number of inmates at four seventy-two. Uh, the total number of females was ninety-five, and the total number of males was at three seventy-eight. The misdemeanor numbers, including male and female, there were seventy-five, which is a fifteen point eight percent of the total population, and the felonies was three ninety-eight, which was a eighty-four point three percent. How many did we read?
Fifteen point eight.
Fifteen point eight percent. How do that, uh, force them?
Could you have any insurance on this?
Nothing there.
No executive session, you can just ask for next time other than the veteran salary. Oh, I'm with you on a job's gonna be one hundred and thirty-three. Who's gonna make that out of them?
I don't see the articles.
They're magically delicious. Uh, anyway, so I'll, uh, I will ask the senior commissioner, Mr. Vaughn, if you will, so I'm going to go for it, please.
I was gonna just end up to the jury, he hasn't been baptized.
Oh, he's...
Oh, yeah, I'll get that fast. Okay, there's nothing more we are to turn on. I'm, I'm so, so sorry, yes.
Judge Tanner, is there provision in the agenda for public comment? If citizens wish to make a comment?
Is there a name, do we ordinarily do that?
Ordinarily don't do that.
Ordinarily don't?
Except to you. Yeah, it can be...
Go ahead.
Will you currently allow it?
Yes.
Certainly.
Thank you very much again, Robert Goodrich. I have two things I'd like to address with, with the county commission. First has to do with recruiting translators. I didn't hear mention made of this, but you have a wonderful uncapped resource in this community and in other communities nearby. And that's the spouses of doctors who work at the medical complex, who come from countries all over the world. And, and while the spouses, uh, are not always part of the medical community employment force, they serve as a wonderful resource for translation purposes if they're invited to serve. And it is an appeal sent to the power of the medical society inviting responsible people who are capable of speaking other language other than Spanish. I, and I would also encourage you to draw upon resources available in the university system, both, both Everholme College, West Texas, Texas Tech. There are faculty members, uh, who come from other cultures, and you have, uh, some of them are multilingual. I, I happen to know some of that. And, uh, while not all spouses might be willing to work and serve as translators, because it's not so time-demanding, usually those would be brief periods of time when you would need translation services. It might be that you have tapped a wonderful resource and...
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the cert, they have to be certified, is that correct? They, to interpret or not?
Well, if you mean, if we're gonna use them in trial, then they can be certified.
Yeah, in trial, in trial they have to be certified. Yeah, that's, that's...
But at least it gets people before the court for consideration, and there may be training resources available for people who are already linguistically endowed. So I would suggest you might want to consider that as a resource. You might be amazed. Second, go ahead. Uh, second item I wanted to address is, uh, earlier this month, I brought a document to present to this court for consideration. And it just so happened the day that I came, I was six minutes late, and the court adjourned after three minutes of time. So I didn't get a chance to make a personal presentation, but I left the document with Secretary for Judge Tanner's office, and I asked that my document, being considered by the court, I would hope acted on favorably. And I wonder if you have had an opportunity to review and act on that document?
We have not acted on it, I did review it.
Okay.
But we have documented all of the due...
Okay. Then is it possible that...
Can you refresh my memory, please?
Well, I was appealing to, uh, is, both, both the city and the county to make provision for, uh, im- employing a resource on behalf of citizens who could translate, uh, financial documents that contain numbers that are quite large. Most citizens are not interested or able to interpret vegetary items on a scale such as are used by cities and city and county government. We're talking about millions of dollars, and most of us, I'm included. If you give over three digits in a number string, I'm, I'm nervous. But if you ask me to pass judgment on a budget matter that contains many millions of dollars, I'm not ever certain. And this is no reflection on this court or the city council. It's a, it's a common term called ignorance and inexperience. I, I, I'm a common, I mean, I fall third grade judge. I'm not the brightest light on the treated life in this community. on the tree of life in this community. So if you ask me to interpret a county, a county budget and ask me to, to approve it or to support it, I'm at a loss to know what to do. However, if this court wanted to serve the public in a meaningful way and, and, and pay for a person or an office, I don't know how it would be done, to, to undertake a review of any vegetarian document, evaluate the relevance of all that's considered in the budget, pass judgment on whether or not it's adequate, inadequate, the tax rate of being appropriate or inappropriate, and give citizens a chance to get an audit of what's proposed in a budget. If I had recent, access to someone that I knew was really knowledgeable, a really experienced person, male or female, that I could call on and say, hey, Ms. Jones, tell me this, is there a strength in the budget rate that's being proposed by Potter County, or are they trying to get out cheap? I mean, if you're dealing with people who are providing services to this court, my suggestion is you don't try to cheap out, you try to honor those who are providing good services, especially with court translators. That's just an example. Why would you want to cheap out when the translation services are extremely important? I mean, they have legal significance, it goes far beyond the moment. So if you were to be willing to appoint or hire a person to serve as an interpreter for citizens where tax matters, I think it'd be wonderful.
Mr. Goodrich, I mean, with all due respect to you, certainly, in my, my opinion, that's what we are here to do.
Oh, I understand, sure.
So we don't need to hire an additional person to make sure we're doing it right?
Right.
The public to tell us whether we are.
I, I've had the same from, from the city councilman who said, look, why are you asking me to hire somebody else, that's my job, I'm here to translate for you. Well, the issue is, there may be some vested interest at stake here in the judgments made by county commissioners, and, and it may be that, that you might not be able or willing to look at objectively the budget that you're proposing to present to the public. That's no reflection on your credibility, it's just a matter of the nature of the job that you hold. And if, if I had, if I had access to a person that I knew was neutral, was not, was not elected, did not have those kinds of responsibilities, they were being employed to evaluate the adequacy or the inadequacy of elements in the budget, I think I would be a lot more confident about saying to the county commissioner's court, gosh, I, I think this budget is great, or I would have some firepower came to you and said, look, you all are not charging a tax rate that's adequate for the needs of this county, and I want to encourage you to rethink what you're proposing as a tax rate, as it is.
So you want a liaison type person that works with the court and the citizens?
To be, to be available for citizens to talk with, who is, who is independent and is willing to say, to, to call this county, this commissioner's court to account in the event there's something that you overlooked, or you were trying to put through that maybe wasn't ethical or did not reflect well on the needs of the county.
Mr. Goodrich, we have open meetings.
Yes.
On our budget, and people are welcome to come in and listen to us, and if you want to send a liaison to those meetings, we'd like, love to have.
Mr. Kelly, you read that right, I can hire somebody, but you know, I've got limited resources.
Me too, it's a challenge.
It's not a way so for us to hire an additional person.
I know that's a little bit radical, but if you're willing to even consider the idea, think about this.
I, I see the revenue in that, and that's just a, it's responsible transparency as we are investing more committees for it, we try to be that committee, the committee that we tasked for the infrastructure of this county moving forward. I see some good points in that, I believe we have an auditor that's very capable and able of.
Sure.
So it's not how we do, it just means that we may need to ask more questions, and I guess that falls back on the court, and that is what the perception of the public is.
As a citizen, I don't know what questions to ask always, but if I had CPA who had years and years of experience in dealing with county or city budgets, and they were knowledgeable about such things, they could advise if there were some really critical issues that needed to be addressed. I think that'd be a wonderful resource for, and Judge, listen to this, it isn't a matter of this county taking on the burden of hiring and employing someone, what if you did some leadership? I mean, really, we already have a distinguished court with a woman judge, we have councilmen who are experienced, credible, if you took on yourself to, to approach City of Rome, Emerald College, Water District, Hospital District, and you said to them, look, we need to, we need to provide a service to local citizens where vegetarian matters are concerned, and I would like each of you taxing districts to agree to pay a share of maintaining this office for citizens, then the burden is not upon Potter County exclusively, burden is shared on all taxing districts, because my concerns as a taxpayer are, are not exclusively focused on Potter County, even though I own property in Potter County, I pay taxes in Potter County, my concerns are with all taxing districts, and I want to know that the, that the, that the tax, the taxes being charged me as a citizen are adequate for our needs as a, as a taxing district, city or county, school district, all of which have budgets, and, and I have to struggle with trying to interpret the budgets for every single one of those taxing districts, that means really is challenging. But if Potter County did some leadership in this regard and said, look, there's some merit in providing this service for citizens, you might call it an ombudsman. I mean, there's both word and bold service, but boy, is it relevant, and anymore, it's really significant in a lot of legal and financial districts, when you have an ombudsman available for citizens who have concerns, or have complaints, maybe I've got a complaint, and I don't, and it maybe has financial ramifications, if, if I had, I didn't, I don't want to go to you, because you'll get defensive and say, hey, could be, chill here, go, go away.
You took your word right out of my behind.
I knew you were thinking that. Well, see, I, I wouldn't have to bother you, I'd go to the ombudsman, and I could say, look, I'm really aggrieved about this, I'm upset about this, and I want something done about it, that ombudsman then has got some authority to address the matter to you all, and ask for, or appeal for a resolution of some sort of my, my distress.
Robert, my door is open eight to five every day, and I'll be glad to give you his number.
And I don't think you're weird. Thank you for your comments.
Now, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for listening, and listen, you can invite dialogue, like this is no time when wonderful things might occur, no time. Thank you very much, Judge.
Yes, sir.
You have the same courtesy, something coming?
Yes.
Alan made for him, I live very near the county, so I don't suppose that to be my address.
We don't have to listen to you.
Due to the political sensitivity of my topic, I prepared my statement, and it's short. As a resident and taxpayer of Amarillo, I'm concerned my city could be making a big mistake investing in a new ballpark for downtown, when the county's memorial stadium could be brought up to modern standards for a lot fewer dollars, like four or five million instead of a thirty-two million dollar new facility. To that end, I'd like to see the commission make it known to the public that it would be worthwhile having that conversation after, after the election about the difference between upgrading versus building a new facility. An interlocal cooperation agreement between Potter County and the city of Amarillo is the statutory vehicle by which Potter Memorial Stadium could be a shared facility and keep Amarillo independent baseball in the suburbs.
Give me a comment about what it'll cost, forty million dollars?
Four or five million.
I think, I think I weigh off, because you know what it would cost just to paint that thing? A million dollars, just to paint it. And, and, and if you wanted to go the route, if you start making changes, then you got to really make some changes, you've got to put in all kinds of things for handicap, and I mean, it's just unbelievable what it would cost to repair that place. It is not a four or five million dollar.
Well, Watson, if I may respond, modern, modernizing it is a subjective standard. I mean, I'm not saying it has to be a, a affiliated team ready stadium, I'm saying independent baseball. So it is, it is a very subjective idea that I plead. My figure was four or five million from a very responsible source, and the reason I keep my comments short is, right now, there's no comment necessary from any of you, I just want that in the, in the conversations, that that could be a shared thing with an interlocal cooperation or cooperative agreement. Thank you. Commissioners, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.